It is 7:00 PM. Will Westport's special town meeting please come to order? And would everyone please rise and join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance Thank you and welcome. Before we address the warrant, I'm going to go through the usual introductory stuff. I'm sometimes tempted to shorten that when we have what looks like it might be a little briefer town meeting, but out of fairness to those who haven't been here before, I'm going to go all the way through it. If you've heard it before, here it comes again. My name is Stephen Force. I'm the town moderator. I chair the meeting and decide questions of order. I'm going to take a few minutes to explain how the meeting works. Town meeting is a gathering of the willing registered voters of the town to act as a legislature to decide on the items set out in the warrant. The warrant is a list prepared by the Board of Selectmen of the matters that we will act upon in this meeting. We will act on everything in the warrant. We will not act on anything that is not in the warrant. The individual warrant items are called articles. We will address the warrant articles one by one. The procedure begins with me reading the article or a summary of it. An article poses a question. I will then ask for a motion, which is a suggested answer to that question, or possibly a suggestion that we not answer the question at all. These are usually prepared in advance so that we have proper legalese. We then follow the tradition of asking for a second, so we know at least two people in the hall are in favor of what's being proposed. We then get a recommendation from the Finance Committee. Then we begin, then we follow with discussion, which you are all invited to participate in. And then when we've completed discussion, we vote. We operate under a set of rules that will be enforced politely but firmly. The purpose of our rules is to allow us to complete our business in an efficient orderly way, identifying and acting on the will of the majority while respecting the minority and always showing appropriate respect for our neighbors. And while the rules are many, they are summed up in these four concepts. We are polite. We deal with one thing at a time. No one gets an unfair advantage. And we move it along as quickly as we can without sacrificing one through three. The authorities for our rules are our town bylaws, a fascinating book called Town Meeting Time, our traditions, and my judgment. If you choose to participate in discussion, I would ask you to step to one of the microphones. Please wait to be recognized or given the floor by me. Please state your name, and please speak only to the question before the meeting at the time. And another important rule, we do not allow personal speech, so we ask you not to speak about anyone else by name. The artful speaker mentions the previous speaker or a previous speaker rather than using the person's name. Certainly rude and disrespectful speech cannot be tolerated. While everyone can speak as many times as they like, no one may speak for a second time until everyone who wants their first chance has had it. We enforce a five-minute time limit on speech from the floor, and that will be enforced. I will warn you at four minutes that you are a minute away from your time being up, and I will ask you to stop speaking at the end of five minutes. A ten-minute time limit is allowed for presentations prepared in advance, of which we will have a couple tonight. As I said, a motion is a proposed answer to the question that the warrant article presents. And it may be that you feel like you would like the answer to be a little different than the one that was originally proposed. So you're welcome to step to a microphone and propose an amendment. However, if the amendment is more than a change in a word or two, or a number, something we can all easily understand verbally, I would ask you to put it in writing and bring it up here and whisper to me and hand it to me. To make your decisions about the questions in front of you tonight, you may need to ask questions of some people to gather more information. We have kind of an awkward procedure for this, but it is meant to avoid arguments flying back and forth across the room. So if you have a question, all questions are through the moderator. So say you wanted to ask a question of town council, you would say, "Mr. Moderator, I have a question for town council." I would say to you, "What is your question?" You would give me the question. I would turn to town council, and I would pass the question on to him. He would answer me, and I would return, and I would ask you if that answer was adequate. So I'm going to ask you not to speak directly back and forth with others. And to those who answer questions, I would ask you to please simply answer the question. It might be, if it's a yes or no answer, just say yes or no. Because if you then begin to editorialize, you're getting extra time. That is really not fair to the rest of the folks in the hall. There are two circumstances in which you may interrupt a speaker. The first is a point of order, and that would be if you feel like I am conducting the proceedings incorrectly, violating one of our rules. That has happened before, and it will certainly happen again, and I welcome your help if it does happen. If it does, please stand, step to a microphone and say, "Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of order," or just "point of order." I'll ask you what your point of order is. If I agree with you, we will modify the proceedings accordingly. If I don't, we won't. The other is a point of privilege, and that is anything that interferes with your ability to participate effectively in the meeting. If you can't hear me, if you can't hear a speaker, if people around you are making noise that makes it hard for you to hear or participate, please say, "Mr. Moderator, point of privilege," and we will address that situation so that you can participate fully. And then lastly, while there are all kinds of rules here, if you have a question, just ask. This meeting's for you and your benefit, not for us to demonstrate outstanding adherence to the rules. If you step outside one of the rules, I will simply tell you that you're outside the rule and ask you to step back within again. So let us flex our voting muscles with a procedural motion here. I'm going to ask if someone would please offer some motion that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and of the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read articles verbatim, but may refer them by number and subject matters. He's so moved with su- We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. And that is how we do it. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $60,000 or any other sum for the design, project oversight, and replacement of the Westport-Briggs Road fire station roof, including all expenses incidental and related thereto, or to take any action relative thereto sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will you offer a motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the design, project oversight, and replacement of the Westport-Briggs Road fire station roof, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Is there a second? Motion, a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation, please?
The Finance Committee has voted unanimously recommend Article one.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Loos?
Jane Loos, living on Main Road. Is it on?
Can people hear her? Thank you.
Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. How's this? Better? Good. I'd like to know where this particular investment stands within the capital improvement plan and why it was not covered six months ago.
Is there, would you like to address that question to someone in particular, or shall I just seek a volunteer to answer it? Is there a volunteer to answer that question? Mr. King?
Yes, when we reviewed the projects, this project had been on the, had been requested by the fire chief for a couple of years. The chief at, last year, was based up because of the finance of the town, thought that he could get through another year with the existing roof. Unfortunately, the roof sprung a leak, and we find it necessary to expedite the replacement of the roof.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article one will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $65,000 for the purpose of funding a contract with a consultant to assist and otherwise advise the treasurer with regard to the operation of the treasurer's office, including any necessary and related costs and expenses related thereto, or to take any other action related thereto, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will you offer some motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of $65,000 for the purpose of funding a contract with a consultant to assist and otherwise advise the treasurer with regard to the operation of the treasurer's office, including any necessary and related costs and expenses related thereto.
I have a motion, a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted unanimously recommend Article two.
And Mr. Carrero, you will begin discussion with a presentation?
Yeah. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for showing up tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for having us. We have a presentation to show everyone on the screen here, and we're just going to go slide by slide and take this one step at a time to go through each, each point that we have up on the screen. So we'll start with the first slide. We want to, we want to accomplish three things here tonight. We want to let the voter know in, in town meeting here that what's occurred, what we're asking for, and what this is going to get us. And the first slide demonstrates the, we call as a crisis in the treasurer's office. Certain items that weren't processed or should be processed in a timely fashion were not done, so. The, which reciprocates into management findings through our outside auditors, which we engage in every year. They come in and they audit the books. They audit the processes that we go through in the, in the, in the Finance Department, be it accounting, treasury, collections. And also, it led to a couple of, a letter from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, which oversees municipal city, municipal government cities and towns that was not so favorable. So those two instances had the Finance Committee, in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen, try to get this moving forward. This has been a lengthy process to, to get this on track, if you will, and get us to the point where we are tonight, to ask for the sum of money to get us moving forward. The handouts that were at the table out front are the, basically, the, the management letter for both sixteen and seventeen, and the letter from the Division of Local Services. We're not going to go line by line and paragraph by paragraph, but you could read those, and those were up on our website to discuss anything that was related to these issues that we're dealing with now in the treasurer's office. So these are some of the issues that led up to the point where we are now. Backlog and daily activities, the segregation of duties within departments. You have the town accountant that should be dealing with certain items. You have the treasurer, and those two functions can really never be commingled. There was concerns about the, now we're looking at major debt for the police station and for the schools. As you know, that's been approved. The treasurer is responsible for the bonding of those. So there was some concerns with that. Payroll deduction information. There was some issues where things were reported late. And we'll switch over to the right side. We looked at some of the issues that have been ongoing. The treasurer's elected with no municipal experience. Bank reconciliations, as we mentioned before, became material weakness within both of the audits that we, that we dealt with. And OPEB, which is the other, other post-employment benefits, were, were wrongly booked onto, onto the, onto the ledgers, and it's, it caused an underestimated value of $100,000. So these are some of the issues that we found in the research that we did over the past couple of years to get to this point. The main, the main keys, the main two issues that we see that as the most detrimental to get this resolved is the unreconciled bank accounts for seventeen months. And these are pointed out in the audits and within the DLS Division of Local Services letter that we've, we've handed out. And the other component of this is free cash is at risk. As you know, we use free cash to develop our budget. We use it for capital plan, and that, I have no confidence in this fiscal year that we'll be using free cash to develop the budget. Because of the process that we need to go through, we need to have, and this slide shows, basically, we had this up on the, when we presented for the fiscal nineteen budget, we showed the flow of free cash within the, within the budget process. So as I just mentioned, the Finance Committee has no real, you know, we're not confident that we're going to be able to use free cash this year because the processes, we have the auditors in, they then, well, let me back up. We, we have the Department of Revenue in. They certify free cash. But what's happened in the past is the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, has asked that we have the audit done first before we can certify free cash. So we're now in December. We don't have that process in place yet. If we were to get the consultant, if you would approve that tonight, we would get the consultant in, get that process done, get the DOR to certify free cash, but then we may be out sometime in, you know, May or June, we will be, well beyond town meeting. So that's the reason why we don't feel confident that's going to happen this year, even with the approval of this tonight. So our recommendations, as, as mentioned, we, we went through numerous meetings with the treasurer and with the consul, with the consultant that we're looking to bring on board. We had meetings with him. They need immediate assistance. It's not, this is not something that we can put off any longer. There is so much that's tied into the office that, that it's cyclical. I mean, it, there's things that need to be done because other things weigh on that process. And we talk about, we talk about the risks if, in fact, we always wonder, well, what if the article doesn't pass, and what those repercussions will be? As mentioned, free cash won't be certified. We continue to have bank accounts not reconciled. The DOR will now, the, they'll consider us a high-risk audity. There'll be, there'll be additional funds to get the audit done. And you have a material weakness on the books, and now that we're borrowing in additional amounts for school, we could see with maybe a downgrade on a, on a bond rating, additional interest that we have to pay unnecessarily. And the big piece on the bottom there, you can see it, is the, the non-distribution of local aid, which is very, very severe. If, in fact, the DOR, and they have done this in other towns, I mean, this has happened in communities where not only processes of the treasurer's office, but other processes that may fall apart, don't get done, they have every right to hold back our state aid. And that means state aid to the schools, highway, and everything that comes up on our cherry sheet. So we just reiterate the article. You know, we want to get back on track. We want to put this train back on the tracks. We, we, we're looking forward. We're not, we're looking at the consultant will bring in some expertise, some templates, some best policies and practices for the office, and hopefully that the, that office will be able to pick up the baton and move forward and get us out of the situation that we're in right now. But it is crucial, and the committee has taken the, and along with the Board of Selectmen have taken the approach that this needs to be done, and this is why we're here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Carrero. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Shufel.
It's the position of the Board of Selectmen that we unanimously support this article. This question is my own, though, and not on behalf of the Board. Through you to the treasurer, I have two questions. One, does the treasurer support the funding of this article? Why or why not? And two, what actions has the treasurer been taking to date to minimize the need for this?
Mr. Brightman, would you be willing to give us answers to those questions?
Mr. Moderator, may I speak in general?
At this point, you would simply be responding to a question, so I'd ask you to give us a yes or no as to whether you support this, and that I believe-
I absolutely support this.
And the other question would be what, what actions you have taken to minimize the need for this?
We're moving ahead on this to stream, get this process streamlined, and we have every confidence that it will be done in the time and manner in which it needs to be done. I have talked to the consultant, and he is with us tonight in case there's any technical questions, but, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shufel. Anything further?
I don't believe he answered my second question. My second question to the treasurer through you is what actions has the treasurer's office been taking to mitigate or to remediate the need for this, or to mitigate or make this less, and what's, what actions are they taking now?
Mr. Brightman, can you offer us a? You're not required to answer that, but we'd appreciate it if you would.
We've been moving on the direct procedures that we need to do to keep the office up to date as much as possible with what we can do. And also, we've hired, we now have a full staff, and I'm confident with this current full staff that we'll be able to accomplish that mission. It's really a team goal.
Okay, but the, the question right now was the actions that you have taken to minimize the need for this. And is there anything further along that line?
I think, just in general, that we, we've been moving forward with everything that we, we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Ms. Chase?
My name is Lucy Chase. I've lived in town for over thirty years. I live on-
I don't believe, is, is this microphone on? Will you speak again?
Hello? No?
No.
Can you hear me now? Better? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lucy Chase. I live on River Road. I am a reluctant speaker at this town meeting, but I am just filled with outrage and just wanted to have my thirty seconds' worth of explaining that. I just think that for this situation to have arisen, we are all at blame, all of you people up there, all of us here who have elected someone who cannot be dismissed because he was elected, but clearly-
I, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second and let you continue, but I, one of our rules is we speak to the question before us. And the question before us is, shall we or shall we not appropriate $65,000 to, to do what we need to do with the treasurer's office? So I would ask you to make sure that what you're saying relates to whether we should or should not do that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I am supporting and am going to vote for this, but I am still just filled with outrage at this failing of our town. And I would urge the Board of Selectmen to consider figuring out how to make a bylaw that if someone is elected who clearly cannot, puts us in this position, that they need to, we need to have a bylaw so that someone can be eliminated.
Okay, I'm sorry, that is not addressing the question before us. That was what I was trying to avoid.
I understand.
So I would ask you to come back to reasons why we should or should not appropriate $65,000.
This is all the time I will take. I just felt I had to speak.
Thank you. Ma'am, I believe you were next.
My name is Amy Lawton. I live on Hicksbridge Road, and I've had a career in accounting. My questions are, I have several questions. I would like to know more about this consulting firm before I sign up for $65,000 worth of investment. I'd like to know who they are, how they were selected, what other consulting firms were selected, and I would like to know what their plan of action is. I'd like somebody from that consulting firm to say what we will get for $65,000, and will we be able to certify our free cash in time for the annual town meeting, which is very important. So I'd like to get those questions answered.
I like to think I'm pretty good at following people's questions and passing them on, but there was a lot to unpack there.
Okay.
Can you, can you tell me what, what questions you would like to pass?
One, I'd like to, I'd like to know the identity of the consulting firm.
Consulting firm, okay.
How, how they were selected.
Shall we maybe do these, shall we maybe do these one at a time? So the, and I believe the, the consultant is seated right behind you. If you wouldn't mind stepping up and answering these questions for us one at a time and again, just, just an answer to the question, please.
Maybe I can answer some of that, too, as well. There was an RFP put out.
Just, just, just the question right now is the name of the consulting firm.
The name of the consultant firm is Eric Kinshoff, CPA.
Thank you. Okay, so, and what is your next question, ma'am?
I wanted to know how this consulting firm was, was selected and what other consulting firms were, were considered.
Were considered? Okay, thank you. Mr. Brightman, will you?
There were three consultant firms considered, and RFP was put out, and Eric Kinshoff was the successful bidder.
Thank you. Does, does that answer your question adequately?
Who were the others?
Will you please step to the microphones, we can-
Who were the other consultants that were considered?
Mr. Brightman, can you tell us who the other two consulting firms were that were considered?
One was in Lakeville.
Okay.
I can't remember the names.
If you, if you cannot, you-
I, I can't recall the names.
Ma'am, your next question.
I want to know what the consultant's plan for action is and what we're going to get for the $65,000.
Sir? Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Eric Kinshoff. I have a municipal consulting firm. I've had it for like ten years. And as far as the plan of action goes, I mean, we've done this in a lot of other towns and to reconcile. So the plan of action is as follows. Yeah, the last audit was June 30th, 2017. I get the cash audit work paper from the auditor, have the bank balance, all the reconciling items matched up, and then from there, we're going to go month by month, from July 2017 to September 2018. We're going to reconcile all the bank accounts. I'm going to understand what the process is that they do now, because there might be some, a lot of stuff that they're doing good, and then we're going to put all the pieces together, and we're going to go month by month. And I'm going to have, like, processes and procedures. The goal is not only to get the thing, get it reconciled, so you don't have the management letter comment, and so you can get to the DOR, but also leave you with processes and procedures that can be followed but going forward. And so that's the plan. The end product is to do that, so you can continue on an ongoing basis, like a plan, and that's basically it. So my goal is not only to do the reconciliations, but in a year from now or two years from now, that you'd be following the processes that we've established, that it will automatically happen, you know, going forward. Because I feel like I didn't do my job unless it's, I don't want to solve much, you know, the old saying, "Give a man a fish, eats for a day. Teach him how to fish." So my goal is to teach-
Can you speak under the microphone? I'm having a-
Yeah. Well, basically, I want to give you the tools to do it on an ongoing basis rather than just do it. And I used, you know, analogy when people say, you know, "You give a man a fish, eats for a day. Teach him how to fish, they eat for life." So my goal is to not only get the fish, get the reconciliation done, but also put processes and procedures in place where they can do it going forward by themselves.
Ma'am, does that adequately answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, you have about thirty seconds left on your time.
There was one more question. One, the last question was, will the $65,000 get us to the point where we can get our free cash certified in time for the annual town meeting to get things appropriated?
Okay. And that, that sounds like a yes or no question, unless there's some vagary to it. Would you answer that, please?
Yes, on, on the RFP that was bid on, it says ninety days from the-
Okay, if the answer, if the answer is yes, thank you very much.
Yes.
Good. Mr. Dutra? Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Appreciate that. I couldn't stand in line, so I appreciate allowing me to, to sit while I was standing. I'll also ask if I have something to say, if I, I believe it relates to the-
Would you identify yourself first, please?
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
You said, "Mr. Sullivan," and I thought everyone knew. I was Michael Sullivan, Drift Road in Westport. Anything else?
I don't have any, the floor is yours.
Okay, so the second part of what my request on a handicap basis was, if you do not interrupt me, that I believe what I'm going to say is relative to the question. And I think, I'd like to just be able to read it, okay?
Well, I, I will not agree to that, because if your speech violates our rules, I will interrupt you, as I do everybody else, to keep it fair to everyone.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm asking if you-
Keep it, keep it within the rules, and you will not be interrupted.
I haven't been able to be back in a while to the town meeting. My request is so rendered. Thank you. I do have something to say about Article two, which I really didn't know much about until I came into the cafeteria, and there was piles of DLS and management reports. In the past two days, I saw a little bit on different Facebook things, an account that I haven't been on for two or three years. And it's just kind of interesting. It appears that Article two motion on our December 2018 town meeting has created quite a furor, if you will, and- I'm going to read from a 2011 letter from the DLS. That's the-
While you're pausing, I'm going to ask you, this is going to relate to why we should or should not appropriate $65,000 for this purpose, is it? Because that's what we're discussing right now, and I have to, to be fair to the rest of people in the hall, ask you to confine what you're saying to whether we should-
Can I answer your first question?
Please do not interrupt me. Confine what you're saying to whether we should or should not, and reasons why we should or should not appropriate $65,000. So please continue.
Okay, thank you. I don't hear well either.
Please continue.
Thank you. Yes, this is related to Article II on tonight's motion. And it has to do with the subject matter, which is distributed at the front of the hall from the same agency that also sent a similar letter in 2011. If you're asking me, I do believe that that letter for discussion, because that's what's been all over Facebook and things, I think we should look at that letter. It's going to take me a few of my minutes to read it, if I could.
As long as you can assure me it relates to whether we should or should not appropriate $65,000, please speak.
So on March 24th, 2011, addressed to the Board of Selectmen and Town Hall, 16 Main Road, and it says, "Dear Board Members," once again, this is from the same DLS, that there's multiple piles of paper out, and on your way in, you probably all got them, which preempted this article. So I wanted to explain that that is the relativeness of what I'm saying. Why? Because that is what we're responding to. But back in 2011, there was... You know, they talk about a financial management review was completed by request at that time, and they came up with some comments about the Treasurer's Office. And when I read it, I don't think there's anything but this adds to a timeline of Article II on tonight's motion. And it basically... What I can recap it is, it talks about what goes on in the Treasurer's Office, and then it talks about soft right system. And it talks about an old-style system of a paper system, without getting into it because it's clearly available. I was able to get it this afternoon online. So what it talks about is elements of the soft right system should have been put in place between departments, so that the financial team of the town. And I just wonder if that's... My one question, as it relates to how I would vote on this, is if... Is that soft right system-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Well, that's my first question. I'll save those thirty seconds. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
My question was, the soft right system that referred to the letter that I referenced, has it been implemented, as was the recommendation from DLS?
Okay. Is there a specific target for that question, or may I just ask for a volunteer to answer it?
The town administrator, who was the... Which... Just a footnote, he was not the town minister at that time.
Okay. Your time has expired at this point, but I'll pass on your question.
No.
Mr. King?
Thirty.
Was the soft right system referenced in the 2011 letter implemented?
No, it hasn't. I know that the Treasurer's Office and the Accountant's Office is supposed to be working on a bridge between the payroll system and the soft right system, so that it would be much easier to reconcile certain accounts.
Thank you.
To my knowledge, that hasn't been completed.
Thank you.
And I'm getting a little nervous. I know I only asked for the thirty.
I'm sorry. Your time... Your five minutes has expired. You'd be welcome to speak again for a second time, when everyone who wants to speak for the first time has had a chance. Mr. Dutra?
Craig Dutra, Union Avenue. I am voting extremely reluctantly for this, and I do that because I think that our town structure with respect to handling finances is flawed, that we are having people that are full-time paid elected employees handling finances. We should have full-time appointed town employees handling those finances.
Thank you. Sir, I believe you were next.
Yes, Henry Swan threw you to anybody who can answer the question. Just approximately, how much state aid is at risk if we don't go through this process?
Thank you. Mr. Carrero, can you offer and answer that question? How much state aid is at risk?
That's really an unknown. The Department of Revenue would determine at the point where they feel that state aid stops, and state aid is reimbursed to the cities and towns on a monthly basis. Used to be quarterly, but they've gone monthly. At any point in time, the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services could stop those payments to the towns.
I think you might be asking for a rough figure of what's involved.
How much?
Mr. King? Mr. King?
Hundreds of-
Mr. King?
Hundreds of-
Mr. King?
Yes.
Would you be kind enough to answer that question?
Yes, sir. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are at risk.
Well, hundreds of thousands really doesn't really cut it, I don't think. But are we talking $100,000 a month, or what are we talking about there?
So we would like to get some rough number per month that monthly aid constitutes, or that state aid constitutes. Mr. King, can you give us a rough monthly estimate?
What will happen, I believe... How much do we receive quarterly, Terry?
Mr. King, I'm going to ask you to please cooperate with my request that you don't speak to other people directly-
I'm sorry. I can't answer the question.
...in the hall. So would the town accountant be willing to tell us... You can simply tell me, and I'll pass it on to the meeting, a rough estimate of what we receive monthly in state aid?
Close to a million. Close, yeah. For the year, sorry, yeah, for the year, approximately five million.
Okay. So we get approximately $5,000 to $6,000 a year, so that would be in the neighborhood of $45,000 to $50,000 a month.
Well, I-
Don't trust my math. Right.
Five million dollars is the satisfactory answer, as far as I'm concerned. Frankly, I don't think anybody here is enthused about voting for this motion, but in view of what is at risk, I will vote for it, and I would certainly urge everybody else in the room to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryden?
Tanya Ryden, Fallon Drive. I've certainly been convinced of the necessity of this as a sort of a Band-Aid, but I'm not confident of the long-term solution is in front of us. This does not seem adequate to a crisis that has been building for many years, and I'm wondering why it's taken so long, and what is the long-term plan for solving this, because I do not sense that there's an adequate solution. But I understand that we need to do this in the short term.
So would you like to ask a particular person?
Sure. I'll direct that towards the Board of Selection... Board of Selectmen, what their long-term plan is.
Ms. Shufel, would you answer that for us?
It's our hope that during the course of this implementation of this contract that we support, that processes and procedures will be put in place in that office to allow it to function more smoothly. I think any other... I think you... I would welcome input from the Treasurer on how he sees that impacting long-term.
So I directed your question as you wished. Would you like it directed elsewhere, or another question?
Well, I would pick up on the point of, you hope this will be adequate. Hope is a fine thing, but it doesn't feel like a strong vote of confidence that we will be seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. So what I'm asking for is, what other backstops do we have to ensure that this problem gets resolved in the long term, because this seems inadequate?
Before passing on that question, I want to acknowledge that lots of people have strong feelings about this whole situation, and that the situation may be larger than a $65,000 appropriation, but what town meeting does, what we are doing here, is trying to decide if we're going to appropriate $65,000. And the other things that people are bringing up are valid issues, but if they don't relate to that, this is not the forum for them. And I know that may be frustrating, but town meeting acts on the articles before it. And I'm trying to avoid this going into a much larger discussion about things over which town meeting has no control, and also avoiding it becoming personal in any way. So with that, what would you like to do going forward?
I'll close my comments with saying, yes, I will support this article, but I would hope that the town develop further strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brightman, I believe you were next, because you have not actually spoken on your own time yet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Brad Brightman, Town Treasurer. To the town, the current situation is my responsibility as Treasurer of Westport.
Ma'am, if you'd just tell... You'd be welcome to turn that podium sideways and-
Oh. Well, I was kind of facing you.
It's only turned that way so people could see the slides.
Okay.
It's more comfortable for you that way.
As previously stated by the Finance Committee, there are a lot of current issues that we are facing. The main issue is the bank reconciliation process. It is my goal tonight to explain a little bit how we got into this current state and how we wish to rectify the problem. I was born and raised in Westport and have lived here my entire life. My concern has always been for our town. Basic responsibilities of the Treasurer's Office, because I don't think you know exactly everything that it encompasses: payroll, processing, benefit administration, bill processing, account reconciliation, tax title, investments, bonding, which included the successful bonding of the police station, the first leg of the new school, septic benefits, general obligation bonds, agricultural preservation, bonding, cash management, deposits, customer, employee, retiree, services, planning and administration, other town committees that the Treasurer is representative of. History of staffing shortages. Prior to me being elected, the Treasurer's Office has been staffed by three individuals for at least over ten years. I've been the Treasurer since April of 2015, a little over three and a half years, approximately. The Assistant Treasurer resigned in March of 2016 for a new job. Upon notice, I immediately requested the Selectmen to post the position to require, rehire an Assistant Treasurer. My request at that time was denied and denied multiple times, even though we had the money budgeted for this position. This staff position remained unfilled for eighteen months. I was finally allowed to rehire a replacement, and a replacement was rehired in September of 2017, as the auditor requested the position to be filled immediately upon the end of the 2016 fiscal year. Obviously, we were running behind with operations even then. Furthermore, the clerk resigned in September of 2016, as she transferred to another position in the town. We were able to hire a replacement in December 2016, but I was pretty much alone in the office for approximately three months. I did-
Mr. Brightman? Mr. Brightman, I'm going to interrupt you for a second, because I have asked other people to please try to confine their comments to whether we should or should not-
Right.
-appropriate $65,000. So I'm going to ask you to make sure that you stick to-
Okay.
-speaking to why we should or should not.
But I did have assistance... Some assistance during that time with payroll and data entry. Even with new staffing problems continued, with a new clerk in December 2016, we were still functioning with one person down for another nine months. We were treading water. Some of the items listed in the management report, some of the mistakes in the Finance Committee report, occurred during this time. A professional improvement plan was implemented to try to aid this new staff member. I probably should have replaced a staff member sooner, but the fear of being alone again, running this office prohibited me. There are antiquated processes in this office. When I came to this office, it was probably good for the former Treasurer, but many of the functions of the Treasurer's Office are performed manually. Can you think about doing that in your own professional office today?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay. And have not been updated and computerized. This system may have worked, but it needs to be modernized, and this will be part of the process of not only bringing us up to date, but modernizing us for the future and streamlining us. I plan on bringing a legacy to this department. Thank you.
Before I recognize the next speaker, our attendance tonight is from Precinct A8, Precinct B67, Precinct C16, Precinct D25, Precinct E63, for a total of 179. And I'd also like to point out that we have yet to have anyone speak in opposition to this. So all are welcome to speak, but we may want to consider whether we're ready to vote on this. Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, my name is Anton Viera, and I rise in support of this motion. I respect the judgment of the Finance Committee and the hard work and the Selectmen in recommending this. My only question in my support, my understanding is that the Mass Municipal Association has a three-year training program for Treasurers. Whether elected or appointed, they're encouraged to participate in the three-year training program, and I'd like to know if we took advantage of that, and if we didn't, if we could still take advantage of it and possibly reduce the $65,000 by doing so?
So the question is, did our Treasurer attend the Mass Municipal Association Treasurer Training, and if not, can he going forward?
If that... Yes.
Mr. Brightman, can you answer those questions for us?
I have been attending the-
The first would be a yes or no? All right.
I have been attending the... It's not Mass Municipal, it's Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association School, and I have been attending that. I have now completed most of my classes.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to confine it to his questions, which were, have you attended the Mass Municipal Association Training?
Yeah.
Apparently, the answer to that is no, although you've attended another one. And then... And the other one is, if not, do you intend to attend the Mass Municipal Association Training?
Well, it's Mass Collectors and Treasurers. And yes, towards their certification program. The thing about-
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you answering the question, but as I requested earlier, I've asked people to answer questions. We appreciate the answers, but I ask you to just confine your comments to the answer. Mr. Viera?
The reason for the question, I was only trying to see if we could reduce the $65,000 by taking advantage of some state programs that are available, whether elected or appointed, for new people in those offices. That's all.
Thank you. Ma'am, I believe you were next, although correct me if I'm wrong.
Deborah Weaver, Drift Road. We didn't get one critical question answered earlier about who selected the consultant and what the team was that vetted this proposal. I'm very concerned about that, because we're voting a lot of money, and we have no idea who picked this company.
So your question is, who picked the consultant and how were they vetted?
Right.
Thank you. Ms. Shufel?
The selection process went through the procurement officer, which is Mr. King, myself, Brad Brightman, Gary Carrero, and I believe Mary Sullivan participated in interviewing the contractor. In addition, he's received some exceptional references.
Does that answer your question adequately? Thank you. Ma'am?
Abigail Test, River Road. My question is, what other towns has this consultant helped specifically, and how are they doing now? Have these problems that the other towns encountered been rectified?
Does that answer your question adequately? Thank you. Ma'am?
Abigail Test, River Road. My question is, what other towns has this consultant helped specifically, and how are they doing now? Have these problems that the other towns encountered been rectified?
Okay, I'd be happy to pass on all. I would wonder if you would have some criteria for how you would know if they were rectified because that sounded like it would be a judgment call for someone.
Well, the letter here says material, I can't remember the term, material, the most serious situation.
Right, so if they were removed from that status.
So have they been, you know, reduced in status to no problem?
Their status normalized with that one?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Brightman, can you offer us the names of some other towns and whether their status relative to the DOR has been normalized?
Yes.
Well, he just finished a wrap-up with the town of Bridgewater, but we have a list here that was part of his criteria of all the different towns. There's at least 14 right here, and it, whether it's the town of Easton, Marshfield, Carver, Braintree, Maynard, Sandwich, Newburyport, the Bonstable Fire District, City of Lowell, town of Worthington, town of Winchton, town of Bridgewater, town of Waymouth, town of Halifax. And then it lists also the services that he performed and also the contacts.
What we're looking for is the names of the towns and then whether their status with the DOR was returned to normal.
One town that I can bring to mind that was in a tough spot was the town of Winchton. They were on the DOR watch, they had a deficit bond.
But I'm going to ask you, rather than the story of the town, we're looking for, would you be satisfied with a couple of example towns? Because I think it might be difficult for him to do all 14.
For a general assessment that your services were produced the desired results.
Sure. Town of Halifax, Massachusetts, town of Winchton, Massachusetts, and town of Hubbardston, Massachusetts.
Were successfully...
Successful and still successful. And at the time that we started, they had issues.
So their status with the DOR has been normalized?
Yes.
Thank you. Ma'am, anything further?
Just one more, that realistically speaking, these accounts can be reconciled in time. I know that question was sort of asked earlier, but I just want to have some assurance, is there a guarantee that we will get this done in time?
In time meaning to have free cash certified?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Because I think that was already answered yes.
Okay, all right. I believe that's it. Well, actually, there is one question. In our last Town Meeting, we talked about $38 million of state aid for the high school and middle school, the possibility of that, to reduce the cost of building the school from 96 to, you know, whatever minus 38 million is. And I'm wondering if that amount of money is at risk, because that would be a lot more than the $5 million mentioned earlier.
So is there anyone, Mr. King, can you tell us, would the state aid for the school building be at risk?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good answer. You can speak next in line. Ma'am?
Yes, Carolyn Grosso, Village Way. I have two questions for the Treasurer. How long is this contract? Is it until everything is completed? Is there a timeline? And will the current Treasurer be sitting alongside the auditor?
So your question is, what defines the termination of the contract?
Yes, what is the length of this contract?
And then will the Treasurer...
Will the current Treasurer be sitting alongside the auditor and learning what he should have been doing?
Could I put that, will the auditing, will this process train the existing Treasurer?
Yes, in essence.
So can we get a definition of the, how would we know when the contract is terminated? And will the, will this process result in training of the existing Treasurer?
There's an element of getting us up to date within 90 days. Then there's an educational element, and then there's a monitoring element as well.
So...
So it just doesn't happen and any leaves. There's also the educational element and then a mentoring element.
Okay. So is there, is there a defined endpoint to the contract or the $65,000? Is there a defined endpoint to this process? Is that your question? Am I accurately... Ma'am?
No, he's saying that 90 days, we're paying $65,000 for 90 days of service?
After everything is reconciled, after he reports and meets with the Department of Revenue and all the parties involved, after he implements new processes and procedures, and there's a, until his job is finished.
I think what she's asking is for a better definition of his job, so we would know when it is, when it is finished.
Right.
And if there's not a good answer to that question, there is not.
To me, it's difficult to believe in 90 days, our, this auditor company is going to reconcile 17 months.
Sir, please, so would you, what question would you like me to pass on at this point?
Well, it's not been answered. I mean, is it 90-day contract or six months?
Well, that's a different question, so I can ask if it's a 90-day contract, but are you still looking for an answer to, how will we know what the endpoint of this process is?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a concise answer to how we would know the endpoint of this process?
The endpoint of the process will be when the procedures are documented, and I'd have recommendations there, and I'd give you that report.
I can't hear you.
Okay. The end of the process will be after the bank accounts are reconciled, a report summarizing the processes and procedures is done with recommendations handed off to the town. That would be the end of the process. That would signify that it's done. There's some steps in between that I can articulate, but...
Thank you. Satisfied with that answer? Want to keep trying or... Sir?
Larry Rollins of Longwood Drive. I have a two-part question. I'm not sure to who to direct it to, so I'll just ask the question. How will the progress of the consultant be reported to the Westport taxpayers, and how often will the reports be issued?
So how will the progress of the consultant be reported to the Westport taxpayers?
I would expect we would get progress reports.
And you'd like to know how frequently?
I don't know who they would go to. And secondly, how will that information be passed along to the Westport taxpayers?
Ms. Schufell?
I want to be clear, the contract is between the consultant and the Board of Selectmen. So the Treasurer is certainly involved, but the Board of Selectmen are the contracting authority. So the consultant will be reporting to the Board of Selectmen the process. I expect we'd have either monthly or every, or at each of our meetings or once monthly reports from the consultant.
Okay.
Can I answer your question adequately? Sir, I believe you were next.
Robert Hill, Division Road. I'm not sure who to direct the question to. Was the outside accounting firm that the town uses asked to participate in the vetting process for the proposed consultant? And if no, why not? And if yes, do they concur with the recommendation?
What is the outside accounting firm?
Our outside accounting firm, Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates. Were they asked to participate in the vetting of the proposed consultant? And if no, why not? And if yes, do they concur with your recommendation?
Mr. King, can you offer us an answer to that question?
They were consulted. In fact, we asked our auditing firm to give us the names of recommended firms to send out the proposal, request for proposals, and the firm you have before you tonight was among those that was recommended by our auditor.
And they recommend...
Any further question?
And my last question is, and they recommended this over other possible, this, the proposed consultant over other possible consultants. In other words, they concur with your recommendation?
They did.
Mr. King?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you again to please be a model for the rest of the group in only directing and responding to questions through the moderator. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, maybe to help answer that question too?
I'm sorry, that's been answered to the speaker's satisfaction. Ms. Rouse?
Yes. My name's Karen Rouse. I'm the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. We just want to clarify the timing in related to free cash.
Can everyone hear her?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to clarify the timing in terms of free cash. The consultant did indicate that he did believe that free cash would be certified in time for the annual Town Meeting. The Finance Committee believes that may not be the case. There's a number of things that need to happen for free cash to be certified. The first is the consultant coming in to take care of the 17 months' worth of bank reconciliations. Once that is done after 90 days, then the financial auditors need to come in and do an audit. Only after the audit is done will we be able to submit to the Department of Revenue in a request for free cash. So the timing of all of those elements is unpredictable and out of our hands, and so we are not certain that it will be done by the Town Meeting. So we are reluctant to say yes to that. So just to clarify that.
Thank you. And Mr. Valkro was next to express an interest.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you. So a motion to call the question offers us an opportunity to decide whether we want to discuss this further or not. So we'll now take a vote on whether to continue discussion of the motion under Article II. A yes vote in this means that you have heard all the discussion that you need to hear and you're ready to vote yes or no on this motion. A no vote would mean you would like discussion to continue and you're not prepared to vote. So all those in favor of calling the question and stopping debate under Article II and proceeding to a vote on the question will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That is carried. So we now move to a vote on Article II. All those in favor of the motion under Article II will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article III, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $30,000 or any other amount to pay the cost of insurance deductibles for claims filed against the town and/or taken in direction relative thereto, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will you offer some motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to pay the cost of insurance deductibles for claims filed against the town.
Is there a second? You have a motion, a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Finance Committee has voted unanimously to recommend Article III.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article IV, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $9,000 for the construction and repair of stormwater drainage from the Westport Elementary School presently dumping on adjacent private property at 783 Gifford Road, and to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised and appropriated, transferred from available funds or by borrowing or otherwise and/or taken in direction relative there, available thereto, by petition. And will the petitioner please offer some motion? Because you can simply step to, or you're going to be up here anyway, you step up to
William Anderson. I move that the town raise and appropriate...
Can everyone hear him? Okay, thank you.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 to be included for the study, evaluation, design, construction, or repair of stormwater drainage from the Westport Elementary School presently dumping on adjacent private property at 783 Gifford Road and other properties.
Is there a second? I have a motion, a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted unanimously not recommend Article IV.
Thank you. And we will have a presentation on Article IV.
Problem, we have three, sorry, problem is we have three storm drains engineered to empty onto private property. The properties are our property, the neighbors', and it also ends up going into the Westport This is a video of the storm drainage coming out of one of the pipes. I'm sorry that it's turned sideways, but I think you can still see how it's flowing out of these pipes. This is a layout of the elementary school. The lines that you see in yellow coming off of the school are the drain lines that are pointed at the properties abutting the elementary school. This is the stormwater coming down through my property in the back, trees all falling over. You can see the rushing water. These rainstorms are only maybe an inch, three-quarters of an inch of water for a total rainstorm. As you can see near the top there, that's the 15-inch pipe where one of the lines that comes out from the elementary school. This is the second pipe. It's kind of buried in with rock and stuff, but it still has a lot of water coming out of it, as you can see. This is it pooling down. We've been dealing with the town for at least a year and a half to try to get this corrected with no results. They keep telling us that it's not their problem, that they've been doing it for 40 years and they can continue to do it. But I think if this was your property, or if I was draining on town property, they wouldn't put up with this, and they would want it corrected as soon as possible.
That's your last slide. You're welcome to continue speaking. I just wanted to let you know that was your last slide. Is there any further discussion of the motion under Article IV? Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I rise in support of this article, and I would like to, through you, Mr. Moderator, ask if the Board of Selectmen have taken a position on this now. I was understanding that they'd researched this a bit more.
Ms. Schufell?
The Board of Selectmen has been advised by Town Council not to comment on this matter.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I rise in support of this article. I'm a member of the School Building Committee as well and had met the Andersons through that process, or the previous speaker through that process, I should say, Mr. Moderator. And I do think that this is something that the town should be addressing. We have an opportunity to do so through different options right now. One of them certainly could be through the school building process. I know there's some opposition to that, and I respect the other point of view on that, but I do think that we should not ignore this problem, and I think we have to take a responsibility as a town. There are a number of places on not only Gifford Road but Old County Road who have been dealing with this, going on close to 40 years now, and, you know, it's a serious situation for them, the point where a number of town officials have viewed this issue, and it's something that nobody wants to take legal action against the town. This previous speaker was advised by members of elected officials that they should seek an attorney. They're not interested, nor are the neighbors interested in doing that. They're just asking for some relief on this issue. And I would hope as a community we'd come together and support this. Where the funds come from, there are other sources, the Finance Committee, the Selectmen and others can debate that, but please, let's not have another special Town Meeting six months from now to deal with a court... not have another special town meeting six months from now to deal with a court case that's been settled. I think this is not a good situation for our town, and I think that nobody's pointing the fingers. It is what it is, and it is an opportunity to solve this problem, and I hope that we can come together and vote on this. The petitioner was given a period from Friday to Monday to get signatures, over 100 signatures. In that short period of time, I think they collected something like 185 signatures. So, there's ground support for that. In the last week, I thought there was a plan to try to resolve this, especially after a planning board meeting on the 27th of November, where the planning board, to a member, each member of that planning board spoke very passionately about, "This is the time to address this issue." So, I would hope town meeting would feel the same way, in that they would vote in support of this, so we can move this on. Again, it's not pointing fingers, but it's something that we're aware of as a community. I don't think anybody living in our town would like to face this and deal with this. There's some personal issues that families have faced over the last few years about this. They're very passionate about it. Maybe they overspoke sometimes, but they had good intentions, and they were trying to be respectful. But to suggest that as taxpayer, that our only recourse is to go to an attorney to solve the problem, we failed as a town. There ought to be other ways of solving this without having attorneys negotiate every step of the way. So, I would hope, and rise in support of this, that people would give it a resounding support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morton?
Mr. Moderator, Hugh Morton. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to oppose this article. There are several reasons. One is that there's at least the prospect that something which will affect the drainage will come out of the school's construction project. It is not clear that is the case, but there are two possibilities. One is something is done and solves the problem. One is that something is done which makes the problem worse. And a third is that nothing is done, and we still have the same problem. But under either event, the $9,000 figure apparently was plucked out of midair. There's been no engineering or other study of what would be done, how the money would be spent, other than possibly putting some gravel in the hole. We think, on behalf of the town, that the money is simply wasted under these circumstances, which does not mean after the construction is over with, and we have a final resolution of what the drainage will be, that a solution could not then be effected when the balls have stopped bouncing. So, we oppose this appropriation on the theory it is simply a waste of money at this time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Abib?
My name is Michael Abib, and I live on Old County Road, and I stand in support of, I stand in support of Article Four. I've attended several meetings concerning the building of the new middle and high school, and the issue's been raised on multiple occasions. You know, it's to whether or not that school plan will cure this problem. And my memory is that the current plan for the new school does not address this problem, and there are no monies in that budget to take care of this particular situation. The new school, because of state law, is required to have no runoff onto neighbors' property. That evidently was not the law back when the elementary school was built, or if it was the law back then, it was negligently done. No one here would want to have this happen to their property. $9,000 is a minimal amount of money, maybe more money may be needed later on, but the process should be started to help these neighbors who pay taxes in town and are our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
The purpose of the $9,000-
Will you identify yourself, please?
Cynthia Anderson, from Gifford Road. And my husband and I are, we put the article forward because we have had, we have many meetings with the Planning Department and with the School Department. We were told to wait to see how the vote would go for the, for the new school, and that maybe it could be addressed then, and that any new drainage was not going to be a problem, that they are obligated not to have extra drainage on, onto abutting properties. And then we were told, once that passed, that to wait to see what the plan was going to be, and to see how they can incorporate it. And in that time, we found out that these pipes and the engineering from the previous building of the elementary school came, came to our property, and not to our property, you know, it doesn't like come right to the line. It comes, I think, within 80 feet of the property line. And there is no retention. There has been no maintenance of these lines, and actually more and more drainage comes to them because of the addition of more parking and things. And there's also, in the newspapers, it did say that in the spring town meeting, that there should be, that there might be more parking lots put up there for the elementary school. And so, that's our concern, that there's added drainage, and it keeps building up, and it doesn't just come to our property. On our property, it's 8.75 acres that are affected up there. And it comes down to the, to the wall of our property, and it's destroying trees. It's, has already washed away within the 40 years. It has done a lot of damage. It's taken a lot of the top soil out, so now it's basically rerouting the trees and uprooting, uprooting trees and that, because there's nothing for it to hold on to. We were told that, that it would be looked into. There was, I think there was even a proposal from Jonathan Levy to have niche engineers look into the problem, but there was no response from that. And it was, I think that was under, it was $8,000-some dollars, and that to, to have that looked at by niche, and they did not respond to that. We, we were told to, to basically seek counsel and have them talk to Town Council. We've gone that route. We're, we're adding up a bill that we were paying on top of taxes. When we were, when we bought the property, we were told, we tried to get an abatement from tax because they were charging us more than we paid for the property, and we were told that those were buildable lots. Well, they're in no way buildable lots, as from the damage that the town has done to our property. It also flows down from our house and onto abutting properties of our neighbors. And within the two weeks, we've had a neighbor who's been flooded out on Gifford Road, and his property has been flooded out. It's gone through his septic, and it has, and from there, it goes right across the street, and it was flooding the street there. And there's, and it was flooded out a pasture from, from the other side of the road, and then it directly goes into the Westport River. So, it's not just our problem. It's a, it's a big problem. We all have septics. We all have wells down there, and it's affecting our properties, which costs us money directly out of our pockets to rectify that. If we could, we would take care of the problem ourselves, because if we have to go to court, I think that probably would just probably add up to be about the same amount. But we aren't, because, we can't do that, because it doesn't start on our property. It's directed at our property, but there's nothing we can do on our property to stop it. We could, well, no. But the purpose is to, for the health of neighboring properties, wells, and septic systems, that flow, and what flows directly into the river. And it says, "Many in town have drainage issues with their property." A lot of people have drainage issues. I'm not denying that. People say that their pastures are flooded, their, you know, their yards, they have problems with water.
30 seconds remaining.
But on top of the drainage problems you might have with your property, think about three huge pipes directly coming onto your, directly draining onto your property from a huge, huge school system, and then the added, and the possibility of added drainage from the new. And we just would like your support and for the health of the river. We don't plan on doing anything with that 8.5, but we would like to keep it to be a natural buffer for-
Your five minutes is expired. Can you wind up very quickly?
Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Ryden?
Tanya Ryden. Certainly, the pictures are compelling, and I'm sympathetic to the cause, and I think, actually, we've had a very wet fall, and stormwater issues are going to be, become increasingly prevalent and problematic for, for many homeowners in town. I have a technical question. If this article were to pass, to whom does the $9,000 go? Is it to a town department? I'm not sure who can answer that question.
I think I can answer that, that if it's simply raised and appropriated without a department to find, it would be under the care of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is John Sharbs. I live at 807 Gifford Road, the property adjacent to the library. For 48 years, I've lived there. It's always been a pond. We always had natural things. But now, since the school has been put up, I have been flooded out four times. I've called every authority in this town, the planning board, everybody's been on my property looking where the well is. My well's 100 yards from where it is. My septic system is flooded every time that it rains, and it goes down to a ditch. The problem is, there's no cover there. I keep getting people, they've been down here, they probed it out, they dug it up last week, and it still hasn't gone through. This would all be eliminated if you put a cover there. But somehow, it's never been done. And we got pictures, the town comes down, takes pictures of my land, the septic system's completely underground. My septic system is 20 feet from the road. Now, that's all I have to say. I just want to verify what Mrs. Anderson said, and we need help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Yes, my name is Charles Buzzy Barron. I'm a member of the Finance Committee. I'm confused about how a vote in favor of this article is going to play out. It will give authority to spend $9,000, apparently to work at the construction and repair of the stormwater drainage situation. But although I would understand this, if this were a legal claim being made against the town, and in return for the money, we were getting some sort of waiver of any further claim in the future, I don't understand what comes from this situation. We could appropriate the $9,000, and then, of course, have the claimants come back again for additional money after that. So, I'm ready to vote against this, not because I don't think the town ought to feel responsibility for water being poured onto somebody else's property. But I'd like to have a sense that there's going to be some sort of closure with respect to this, that will give the claimants what they want, and that it will be settled for the future.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Tony Millam. I live at Drift Road. It seems like that this article needs an amendment. Basically, what we've seen in these slides is a problem, but not a solution. And the Finance Committee member who got up and spoke on this pointed that out, that there's no engineering solution for this. Understanding that the town has a responsibility for damages that this water is doing to abutters, I would like to make a proposal to amend the article and strike the words, the "construction and repair," and insert the words, "or engineering of a solution to stormwater drainage."
Can I interrupt you just a second? Mr. Anderson, would you please bring forward your copy of the motion? Because, as you may have noticed, I tried to put the actual motion language for every other article up here, and a lot of things happened at the very last minute with this one, changes from their lawyer, changes. And so, unfortunately, would you bring that to me, please?
Sure.
So, I want to reread the motion, because the motion that we're discussing does not read exactly like the article.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If that's the case, why is the slide on the screen?
Well, if you've been to town meeting for the last several years, I've always put, I've always put the article up on the, on the, on the screen. But as I explained earlier, an article asks a question, and a motion proposes an answer. I tried to improve that situation with this meeting by putting the motions up there in yellow print, so you could see what you were actually voting on, because we've never done that before. And as I said, I apologize that the motion wasn't ready for this. I scrambled to put a PowerPoint presentation together for the petitioners, and to get a lot of things in order at the last minute, and it was not possible. I didn't get the motion language up here. So, I will read it for you now. This is what the motion reads that we are discussing right now. "I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 to be included for the study, evaluation, design, construction, or repair of stormwater drainage from the Westport Elementary School presently dumping on adjacent private property at 73 Gifford Road and other properties." So, the motion before us now proposes $9,000 for the study, evaluation, design, or construction.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator?
There's no such thing as a point of information.
Mr. Moderator, with that in mind, I withdraw my request for an amendment.
Thank you. And I apologize that you had to go through that. It was unavoidable. Thanks. Can I hang on to this? Unless you need this, I'm going to hang on to it. Thanks. Mr. Whiten, I believe you're next.
Okay. My name is Jim Whiten. I live on River Road. I am on the planning board, and I rise in opposition to this article, although I do support the applicant's or the petitioner's desire to get this fixed. We have just had a meeting at the planning board on site plan review for the school systems on November 27th, and a great deal of time was spent discussing this drainage issue, and whether or not the school could be persuaded to address this while they have heavy equipment and engineers to be able to do this. My fear is that if this passes, the $9,000 is wholly inadequate to complete the job that it is purporting to do. And I don't think that the petitioners will come out with anything more than they have now. I think that the building of the school should incorporate the redirection of these three pipes off of the elementary school, as this is one town-owned site. And with site plan review, they should be required to contain the water the way that it should be. And I think that they have every ability to do it. They just have to figure out how. It is not a difficult engineering task. It is not a difficult physical task to put the pipes in and redirect it to the stormwater attenuation that the school will be putting in for the new schools. It may cause the systems to be enlarged somewhat, but in the scheme of things, it's much, much cheaper than if we have to go back two years from now, because they didn't do it, and we still have this problem, and we get sued, and we have to do it. So, I would vote against this. I think the $9,000 would be wasted. I think the School Building Committee should address this as part of the new school system.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan?
Okay, I'm watching the clock, secondhand to get up there. But I had one question on the slide. It mentions Westport Elementary School, and we're talking at great length about all the construction that's going on. The kids are going to be in the class at Westport Elementary School, so my question for perhaps some of the previous speakers that referenced it, is the stormwater coming from the Westport Middle School building?
Is there someone who would like to answer that question? Mr. Viera, can you answer?
No, it's coming from the elementary school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
So, in follow-up to that, as long as the water streams aren't passing through that middle school, that was my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to clarify some discussion from previous speakers about the $9,000 figure in the motion that you appropriately read. I was understanding in the last week that there had been conversations from various boards, and the word "nine thousand" to be included, not to be the total amount, but to be included for design and for solution. I was also in attendance at a November 27th planning board meeting with the engineers, answered a question directly from planning board members, and suggested that this would be something that they could do, and at least come up with a figure, so they could see what the design would be associated with it. And I know there's a healthy disagreement, and I think the people that are in opposition are trying to protect the interests of the town. I appreciate that. And I think the neighbors appreciate that. Their intention is not to make this a legal situation. The only reason there's an article on this warrant is because they've been closed, they've been actually sent out a meeting sometimes, when they've tried to attend a meeting that they were told to attend, because that was the appropriate forum to address their concern. There are some people that didn't speak tonight, some that are not in the audience, that, you know, health-wise, this has bothered them for a number of years. I don't know what other way we can, as a community, respond to this, if we're not willing to bring this up. And I guess the article is the one way of doing it. I signed that petition. I really didn't want to do that, because I didn't think that's what we should be doing. I think that there were town resources that should have been addressing this in different formats. I'm not suggesting the best solution, but I definitely think this is a solution. And the motion that has presented to town meeting, after my, and this is my, I wasn't there, but my understanding is that the town's attorney and the attorney representing the petitioner had suggested this language as a way of coming to an agreement to move forward to allow the selectmen, to allow the finance committee, to allow the school committee, to allow the school building committee, to sit down and see if we can collectively come up with something that the planning board is asking us to do before they approve the site plan review. So I don't know why anybody would oppose this tonight. We're not suggesting, first of all, anything outside of, if people are saying we have no money, if there's at least $9,000 that the town meeting has suggested, start with that, and see if we can approach these other budget areas, whether it be a school committee operating budget, whether it be the operating budget for the selectmen, whether it be the operating budget for the school building committee. Are there ways that we can gather resources to address this problem that, you know, we're talking about at least seven to ten homes that have been dealing with this for a number of times. It's a serious event. Anytime it rains, I guess people think I'm still a member of the selectmen, because I get these calls and go down there, they can't even cross on Gifford Road. It's, you know, it's flooding into the river. I mean, we're concerned about the river, we're concerned about habitat, aren't we concerned about our population and our taxpayers? Come on. This is, why are we saying that we can't address this at town meeting? If we can't address it at town meeting, then tell the residents of the town where they can get addressed this. Does it have to be the legal system? We're going to pay attorneys of both sides to argue this? I don't understand that. I don't want to be potty to that. I think there's another way that we can come together in this. And I hope we vote in affirmative and support this tonight, not on the article that's up there, but on the proposed motion to that article, which says "nine thousand included" in other sources. Elected officials can decide how best to deal with this, but we need to come to closure and come up with a plan. Every resident has said their intention is not to sue, their intention is not even to have an attorney on this, they're embarrassed about it. But they're also embarrassed, because when they walk out of their yard, their septic system is overflooded, their wells are being contaminated. I've asked them to go to the Board of Health to address that. They don't want to cause problems for the town. They just want somebody to resolve it. They can't imagine that the town's not addressing it. Now they've got people that are pumping, this last year, pumping out their cellars because of this, you know, round the clock. We've got people that are coming to the side of the wall with water going on. With the library, with the elementary school, you know, we failed in that design. And I think with the leadership now with the site plan review, we're not going to fail again with the new school, because I think that there's going to be some participation in the process before we come to closure and what that actual design's going to be. But please, let's not bicker about whatever amount it's going to be. It's going to be a heck of a lot less than we have to fight this in court. And I can't imagine that whether we win or lose in court, that we're going to be happy about it.
Thank you. Ms. Los, I believe you're next.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask a question of the school building committee about what are their intentions as an alternative to this article? Would they undertake the responsibility to ensure that the plans that they are responsible for preparing and implementing would address this issue?
Is there a representative of the school building committee who would volunteer to address that question? You're certainly not obligated to, but we would welcome that if you chose to.
Mr. Moderator?
Point of order?
Yes?
We've already had discussion on which building is referenced, and the article clearly references the elementary school is causing the drainage, so...
Okay. I'm sorry, that is not a point of order. The proceedings are not proceeding incorrectly. But we don't seem to have a volunteer for a response to that.
I'm a member of the committee.
Okay, Ms. Schufel, will you answer on behalf of the committee?
The, other members of the committee can comment, but the school building committee was also advised by council not to comment on this matter.
Okay, thank you. And so, I believe we are to Ms. Ryden.
I think there was another member of the committee just, I don't know if he was...
I'm sorry, as long as the questioner is satisfied with the answer, we were just asking for an answer to the question. Ms. Los, were you satisfied with your answer? The answer is that they've been advised by their attorney not to answer. Okay, well, Ms. Los has the floor. It is up to her to decide whether that answer is satisfactory. If she wants to speak further, ask more. Yes. She's asked if I would please direct a question to town council, asking why they recommended to the school building committee that they not answer this. Mr. Eichmann, can you offer us that answer?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, John Eichmann, Town Council. The property owners have made a formal legal claim against the town. That claim is presently being evaluated, and while it is being evaluated, it is our recommendation that the town not discuss the legal issues involved.
Thank you. Ms. Los?
My comment was not to deal with the legal issues. What I'm trying to address here is, will the school building committee, which has, you know, nearly $100 million in its hands, whether or not they could undertake on behalf of the town to try to find a way within their designs in order to address, at least begin to address some of these issues?
Okay. Well, and so you got a response from a member of the school committee that said, or of the school building committee, who said that the committee does not want to answer that. Now, you could direct that to another member of the school building committee if you thought you might get a different answer. Or, and also, if another member of the school building committee wants to offer a different answer, you're welcome to get in line to speak. But it would now be Ms. Ryden's turn to speak.
Tanya Ryden, I'm not sure that, I would direct through you, perhaps to the selectmen, sort of follow on my original question, and based on the follow-up discussion. If the town meeting votes to approve this $9,000 for appropriation, it would go, be under the control of the Board of Selectmen, is what I understand. And my question is, can the Board of Selectmen, maybe they can't, based on the prior answers, indicate how they would utilize that $9,000? Would they give it to the school building committee to address the issue, as Ms. Los was trying to get at? So I don't know if you can answer that.
I think I can tell you that they cannot give it, they cannot give it to the school building committee. Town meeting appropriates funds to various entities, and as it stands right now, we would be appropriating it to the Board of Selectmen. So that part of your question, I think I can answer. What was the other part?
I guess then, if it is appropriated to the Board of Selectmen, what would their plan for spending the money be?
I'm not sure that it makes sense to pass that on, because I can't imagine that they have already discussed that and voted on, although I can ask them, have you decided on a plan for that, should this pass?
We have not, we have no comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gee, I believe.
Constance Gee, River Road. I rise in opposition to this, not because I don't have incredible sympathy for the people that, the petitioners, I have watched them at meeting after meeting beg the town to address this over the past year and a half, and have been appalled, actually, at the way they've been treated. I think this must be dealt with, but I think this is a bad precedent to set, to deal with it in this fashion. Again, $9,000 is not going to fix this problem. I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be dealt with by the school department, and within the context of the school building committee. They, as a former speaker mentioned, they have the equipment, they have the expertise, they have, in fact, sort of turned their back on their neighbors in this situation. Someone should be held accountable for this, and I think that's where the accountability should lie. And to come to town meeting and ask for $9,000, that we don't know what's happening with it, I think it's a bad precedent. Also, there's other circumstances like this, probably all over town, with municipal infrastructure that's pouring water onto people's property. So, you know, we have problems on River Road. So it could be a bad precedent, and that, you know, there are a lot of people that would come here and say, hey, would you please do something? Again, this needs to be dealt with. I feel very bad for this neighborhood and these people, but I just think this is the wrong way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Valcourt was, oh, no, I apologize, Mr. Carrero was next. Yes?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the petitioner. Since the petitioner has put this through at town meeting, I'd like to hear from the petitioner, once they have a study in hand, if this gets approved, what the next plan is. You have a study, that's basically what you have. And there are other associated costs that come after a study. What is the plan after that study is done, if the town meeting approves tonight? What do you plan on doing with that study?
All we're asking...
I'm sorry, so you are asking of the petitioner what they're going to do with the study?
Well, the petitioner's asking for a study to be done.
Well, no, the motion before us is to appropriate $9,000 for the study, evaluation, design, construction, or repair of stormwater drainage. So it would be up to the Board of Selectmen whether that is used for study, evaluation, design, construction, or used not at all, which is also their option. So it wouldn't be up to the petitioner to determine how that was going to be utilized.
Well, the petitioner developed the, developed the motion...
Correct.
So in my mind, the petitioner has some kind of game plan after this is approved to, I mean, a study is just a study, it's not going to do anything. I'm wondering from the petitioner, what they envision to happen after this study is developed? And that's purely what the motion was, it was to obtain a study.
No, the motion is to appropriate $9,000 for the study, evaluation, design, construction, or repair. So it could be used for any of those things, or as I said, the selectmen could opt to not use it at all, which is also their option, because the money will be appropriated to them.
Could I ask, through you, Mr. Morten, could we ask the petitioner what they plan on this, what they plan, once this is, if this, in fact, this gets approved? Let's say the selectmen approve this, through the budget process, and we have a study in hand. What does the petitioner want to see happen out there with a study? I mean, is that a fair question?
Well, if you would like to answer that briefly, please do. I mean, I would assume your answer would be, you want to get your stormwater situation rectified.
Exactly. But ever since we've...
Although, Mr. Carrero still has the floor, so did I summarize, did I summarize what your answer would have been? So he would like to know, but briefly, please, what you envision if this is passed, and the selectmen opt to use it for a study?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
So if it passes, if the selectmen opt to use it for a study, what do you envision as a result of that, briefly?
Briefly, that article was not proposed, the article that's up there was not proposed by my husband or I, or our lawyer. It was, the one that my husband read was, and it said that the money could be appropriated for the study of the stormwater...
I realize this is an awkward question, and you don't have to answer it. But his question is, if this was, if this passes, and if the selectmen chose to spend it on a study, what do you envision being the outcome of that?
I would think that there would be a positive plan that could alleviate the stormwater that is causing the damage. We're not asking for damages.
But again, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have to ask you, you're now answering, Mr. Carrero still has the floor.
All right.
You've been nice enough to offer to answer his question, which is great, but I'm going to ask you, to be fair, so that you don't get his time, that you just answer the question, and then you're in line to speak, and you can continue that. But if I understand it right, your answer would be that you envision a plan being in place that then is enacted or carried out to remedy your stormwater situation?
Yes.
Would that be accurate? Okay.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
And I reiterate what Mr. Morton said here on the Finance Committee. We heard the petitioners, we sympathize with the petitioners, but at this moment, there's not enough information to go forward with this. I hear covets, and I hear 15-inch pipes. Those are very expensive propositions for the town to even begin to remediate in the short term. We had said that we would like to look forward to the school building committee, maybe we could work this out in the short term, or get the homeowners satisfied enough so that we can maybe appease them, so this doesn't go to legal action. That's exactly what was discussed at the Finance Committee, and we still are opposed to this.
Mr. Valcourt, you are, no, I apologize, Mr. Habib, you are next. Mr. Habib, you are next. Oh, you have already spoken? Then, I'm sorry, then Mr. Valcourt would be next.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to call the question.
Okay, so, once again, a motion to call the question is, gives the meeting an opportunity to decide whether we want to hear more discussion, or if we have heard enough discussion and are ready to proceed to a vote. So, a yes vote on the motion, oh, was there a second to that? Okay. So a yes vote on a motion to call the question means you've heard as much discussion as you need to, you would like to proceed directly to a vote. A no vote means you would like discussion to continue. So all those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion on the motion under Article Four, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That is carried. So we now move to a vote on the motion under Article Four. All those in favor will please raise their hands. Those opposed? May I have a couple of volunteer tellers, please? We're going to need to count. So, our procedure for this is, I'm going to ask all those in favor to raise their hand, and please keep your hand raised until you get a clear indication from the teller that they have counted your vote. They will look at you and point to you. Do not lower your hand until you've been looked at, made clear eye contact, and pointed to. So all those in favor of the motion under Article Four will please raise their hands. Now, will those opposed please raise their hands and keep your hand raised until you get a clear signal that your vote has been counted? Mr. Schmidt, I see another hand up in your, in your section that hasn't been counted.
You.
Hugh. Sorry, is there, there's a gentleman, there's a gentleman back there in your section, Hugh, whose hand is still raised? The totals are 80 yes, 67 no. The motion is carried.
Motion to adjourn.
That completes our business. I have a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? We are dissolved. Thank you very much.